You're on record.
All right. Meeting of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills Planning Board from Monday, February 3rd, 2025 at 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJESAG 10:4-6 at Second of New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Didich?
Yeah.
Mr. DiPiero?
Here.
Councilwoman Hernandez?
Here.
Mr. Mealy?
Here.
Mr. Matt?
Present.
Mr. Napolitano?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Stanziel?
Here.
Chairman Dinesh Moore?
Here.
We also have our board planner, Ms. Winter, our board engineer, Mr. Canjiano, and our board attorney, Steinle.
Let's do the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and this is the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, our first item is to swear in two of our people who were reappointed this year, Mr. Napolitano.
Yep.
And, uh, who else was?
Ms. Smith.
Ms. Smith, oh yes, of course.
Could you please stand up? And you can repeat after me and raise your right hand. I state your name.
Aye.
Jennifer Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear.
And that I will bear.
True faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will impartially.
That I will impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties of the office.
All the duties of the office.
Of Planning Board Class.
Planning Board Class 4.
Planning Board Class 3.
2 for Ms. Smith.
Oh, 2, I'm sorry, oh my gosh.
Is that right?
Class 4.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome back. Thank you very much. All right. This meeting is open to the general public. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak to us tonight on a project, something that is not on our agenda tonight? Hearing and seeing none. We move on into our agenda. The first item on the agenda is a resolution. Has everybody had a chance to look at the resolution for application number 24:53, Anand and RuPaul Shaw, 14 Pudding Stone Road, Block 8? 3-zone, R1, major soil moving permit. Is anybody willing to move the resolution? Mr. Mealy?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that application as you read it.
Do I have a second?
Second, Piero.
Didich?
Yes.
DiPiero?
Yes.
Herna- excuse me, Hernandez?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Shaw, who's on here? Stanziel?
Yes.
Dinesh Moore?
Yes. All right, now we move on to our agenda. We have application number 24:532, Damodoro Mahajan, 470 Troy Road, Block 733, spot 01, Lot 15, spot 02, Zone R2, major soil moving permit.
Hi, good evening.
Yes?
Hello. Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Damodoro Mahajan, M-A-H-A-J-A-N. My address is 53 Carlton Drive, Parsippany, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Well, tell us why you're here tonight.
Okay, good evening, uh, good evening, members of the Parsippany Planning Board. I, uh, the applicant, propose to move 542 cubic yards of soil as part of a proposed single-family home on 470 Troy Road in Parsippany. Um, I, I actually, as a bit of history, uh, back in May 17th of 2017, I went to the Board of Adjustment and received approval to build a similar home, slightly larger, uh, which was approved and a resolution was entered. But here I am, it's many years later, finally excited to move forward with this with your permission. The Township of Parsippany Engineering Office has no objection to my application per their memo to this board dated December 6th, uh, 2024. I will comply with all of the requests in their memo. And, um, with respect to the, um, I could go ahead and get into the number of truckloads, how many days, and further details with your permission.
We would like to hear that.
Okay, excellent. So with respect to the number of truckloads that we estimate, and this is all based on consultation with my conversations with my engineer, Adam Kandil of Daytel Engineering, located in Mountain Lakes, New Jersey, uh, the number of truckloads is approximately 28, um, so it's essentially 543 divided by roughly 20 or so of soil that needs to be removed. Number 1, number 2, how many days, um, uh, will the trucks move the soil? Approximately 2 days with a maximum of 15 truckloads per day. Where, uh, will the soil be taken from? The soil will come from the excavation of the house foundation. The house footprint is approximately 2800 square feet. All material not used for backfill will be hauled offsite. Uh, with respect to the route of the trucks, um, fortunately, there are many major highways very close to the job site. Uh, Route 80 and Route 46 are a mile or less, and Route 10 is about 2 to 3 miles away. The shortest distance will be utilized and taken based on discussions with my site, site work contractor. Uh, what time, uh, will the trucks come and go? Um, we want to be sensitive and aware of school buses and children, and also, uh, of the morning and evening rush hours, so we'll plan to, to do this between the hours of 9:30 AM and 2 o'clock PM as to be respectful and sensitive of those. And those are, uh, kind of the main points that I have.
Andrew, do you have any, uh?
Excellent presentation.
Thank you, sir. Kind of nervous, but thank you.
Um, you hit everything that I would have asked, um, and then you, um, you did comment on the Township Engineers, uh, letter. You will comply. There is a tree removal permit that's required.
Yes, sir.
Soil sediment control from the county that's required, so I'm, um, it sounds like you're on top of these items and, uh, all those items will have to be shown to the Township Engineer before he'll give you his approval.
Absolutely, sir. I'll be sure to comply with all the items enumerated in the memo to the planning board from the engineering office.
That's all I have, Chairman.
Any members of the board have any questions on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none? And any members of the public have any questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Do you have anything further to add?
No, thank you very much for your valuable time.
Any members have any thoughts or questions at the moment? Then this closes the evidentiary portion of tonight's hearing. Uh, do I have somebody willing to make a resolution?
Mr. Chairman? A motion to approve application number 24:532, Damodoro Mahajan, 470 Troy Road, Block 733, dot 01, Lot 15, dot 02, Zone R2, major soil moving permit.
Do I have a second?
Second. Napolitano.
Thank you, Mr. Napolitano. Uh, Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich?
Yes.
DiPiero?
Yes.
Hernandez? Yes. Mealy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Smith? Yes. Stanziel?
Yes.
Dinesh Moore?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Very much appreciated.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, this moves us to the last item on tonight's agenda. Application number 24:528, V10 Hilton Court, owner LLC 2 Hilton Court, Block 202, Lot 3, Spot 1, O, minor site plan to modify building height, removal of drive ramp, relocation of parking spaces, and setback improvement. You?
Thank you. Thank you.
Skipper, bro.
Thank you.
You? Stevens on the block, we're in a local of Parsippany, on behalf of the out 5 V10 Hilton Court owner LLC. This application should be quite familiar to the board. The board has, uh, entertained, uh, site plan applications for this site, uh, twice previously in the last 3 years, most recently, uh, less than a year ago for an amendment. Uh, we're here again this evening because the property is under new ownership. Onyx Equities sold the property, uh, to the new owner, and the new owner, you know, is in the process of constructing it. If you've driven by the site, you've noticed it's been completely demolished and degraded that way. But the new owner has certain preferences as to the style, uh, location of offices within the warehouse. You're going to hear about that, but it's just a little nip and tuck, uh, purely preferential on behalf of the new owner, um, which they think is going to make it a, a better, uh, product for the, for the warehouse market. So we brought the whole team here tonight, um, because just in the, you know, Murphy's Law, we didn't bring everybody we'd need them. But tonight, you're primarily here from Louis Reyes, the professional engineer, who you heard last time, early, I guess, the spring of 2024, when this application was being amended once before. Uh, we also have an owner representative this year, we have a traffic engineer, we have our architect, we also have a professional planner. Um, in case any issues arise, we have the firepower and knowledge here to address anything. But I do think it's just worthwhile for the board to hear from Mr. Reyes, uh, exactly what's changing about this site. Oh, and, uh, which is again why we're here today for site plan amendment. So we'd like to review, uh, Mr. Reyes' sw.
Do waivers, Rob? Yeah. Just go through the.
There's a couple waivers that are required.
Couple waivers. We have on Form 516 for the existing post signs. Environmental assessment study, uh, submission of site photographs. And the combined preliminary and final being separate sheets, um, and again, for the signs. That's all, and we don't have any objection, I don't think, and I'm sure the testimony showed that, uh, none of the changes proposed affect any of those conditions.
All right, we have a motion to approve the waivers as outlined in the planner's memo.
Motion, Matt.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Yeah, my first name is Louis, that's L-U-I-S. My last name is Reyes, that's R-E-Y-E-S.
Is that microphone on?
No, I don't think so.
It was on. Is the orange light lit up on it?
On the top.
Look at the... Don't, don't flick the thing, okay? Press, press the button at the bottom.
I, I guess just speak closer to the microphone, please, just, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You hear me?
Okay, great.
No.
No?
So just your address and then, um, provide the board with your qualifications, which we've already heard, but just as a reminder. Yeah, I live in 78 Blaschere, that's in New Jersey. Uh, I am the civil engineer for the project. I've worked in civil engineering for about 10 years. Um, I've worked on numerous projects across New Jersey. I have my bachelor's design in civil engineering, upon New Jersey State of Technology. Um, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, and I previously testified in New Jersey as an expert witness. I am also a civil engineer who testified for the last hearing for this application.
And your license is remaining listed?
Yep.
We'd ask that the board's back in person again, that it's an experience.
Anybody have any questions on those qualifications? Hearing and seeing none.
Can you grab the other microphones that you have on as well? It's sitting right here. Yes. They're already all on. Is the orange light on? That's the orange light.
All right, Mr. Reyes, since you've been intimately involved with this project, it's pretty much your design, uh, can you give the board an overview of what this project is? What, what they approved previously twice? And then what we're nipping and tucking about it per the new owner's preferences?
Yeah. So, just to give a free overview, overview of the property, um, the property where the project will take place is approximately 10.4 acres in size. It's identified as Block 202, Lot 3.10. Uh, the address is to North Shore, Pennsylvania, and is situated in the specialized economic development district time zone. The property is bordered by Hilton Court to the north, the highway of Route 10 to the southwest of Route 10, Pansyltrend, and Draven Way to the south and southeast, and adjacent commercial lots. You guys, you've all received 2 versions of the site plan rendering. At the bottom left corner, you'll be able to tell which one is which.
And those, uh, if, if those weren't seated, we can say, so let's mark that package handed out as A1. You want to mark them separately together?
I'll mark the previous application site plan render as A1, and I'll, I'll mark the new application site plan render as A2. Okay, thank you. Again, the, um, the bottom left corner indicates which version of the site plan rendering it is. It notes previously approved application, that was the one that was approved. Um, there was a resolution that passed for this, uh, previous application in May 2024. And then, um, next, the one nearest to me is the new application. So, um, I'm going to go through a list of site plan features that have changed or remain the same from the previously approved application. The project entailed the construction of 122,664 foot of proposed warehouse with a total office area of 12,300 square feet. This is consistent with the previously approved application. The proposed building will also remain in the same location. In the approved application, the warehouse, the warehouse had 2 offices that were 6,150 square feet each, located in the south center and in the southeast center, where the main office entrance is located, um, but noted as red on the site plan rendering. In the new application, we're maintaining the same total office area, but we're merging the 2 offices, um, into a single office area with the main entrance now located at the southeast corner of the building. This configuration slightly improved the front yard setback from Draven Way, at the southeast corner of the building, at the canopy, because the office entities in that area have been removed. The building height has been reduced from 44.7 feet in the previous application to approximately 40.8 feet in the new application. Loading docks will remain in the north side. The approved application included 25 loading docks and 2 driving ramps. The new site plan maintains 25 loading docks but reduces the driving ramps to 1. This adjustment allows for a landscaped island adjacent to the remaining driving ramp, creating a smoother transition from the finished floor elevation of the building to the loading dock area, which is 4 feet lower, and eliminates the need for a transition wall between the ramp and the loading dock area. The width of the loading dock striping and driving ramp has minor revisions to match the latest architectural programs. The new application is keeping the same number of car parking spaces on the east and south side of the building with the same number of ADA and make-ready EV spaces as previously approved. The ADA and make-ready EV spaces have been relocated in the new application to be near the new main office entrance in the northeast corner of the building. The parking lot, just so, this may be a question that comes up. The old one, and just to, um, get in front of this question, the old one shows, um, 7 car parking spaces in this radius, and then the, the new one shows 7 landback spaces. Just to be clear, um, the 7, the 7 parking lot spaces will be maintained as 7 landback car parking spaces. This was requested by the Highlands Council and approved by the township in the previous app, application during reservation. It's not new to the town. The required number of car parking and how the required number was calculated will remain the same as approved. 11 trailer stalls on, 11 trailer stalls on the west side of the building, and the site circulation with cars, trucks, and emergency vehicles all remain unchanged from the previous application. The fire department has approved the new application. There is a monument sign north of the property near the truckport entrance, which remains consistent with the prior approval. No new signage is being requested at this time. The retaining walls for the project will remain in the same location and the maximum height as approved. Um, jumping into grading and the major soil moving permit. Justin Liza, Liza, the township engineer, was okay with us using the approved major soil moving permit for the new application, as long as we provide a testimony on any new change in, in the volume of soil to be moved. The building's finished floor elevation and the 4-foot differential from the loading dock area to the finished floor elevation, um, remain unchanged from the approved application. The grading is nearly identical to the approved application with minor adjustments to ensure the new location of the proposed ADA stalls comply with ADA standards. These slight grading modifications will not affect the volume of soil to be moved for the project, and the new application will be covered in the approved major soil moving permit. I'm going to jump into utilities. The proposed building will have 2 water connections at the adjacent street. The existing water service connection to Draven Way remains unchanged from the previously approved application. The applicant's team held a meeting with the Township Water Department, the Water Department in December 2024 to review the latest utility plan to discuss upshifting the existing water service connection at Hilton Court for the proposed building. We received positive feedback from the Water Department, and SESI has revised the plan based on the meeting and submitted it back to the Water Department. Sanitary will continue to connect, to connect to the existing sanitary system at the north portion of the property, which remains unchanged from the approved application. The new application has been approved by the Township Sewer Department. Proposed electric, telecom, and gas will connect to the existing utility infrastructure at Hilton Court, which remains unchanged from the approved application. Landscape and lighting remain identical to the previously approved application. The new application has been approved by the Township Parts and Forestry Department. Stormwater remains identical and will be collected, treated, and detained by proposed fire retention basins and previous payment system, which is consistent with the approved application. The new application will have a 4-foot-high chain link fence with gates that will be installed around the fire retention basin for safety reasons. And to finish off in conclusion, I just want to let you guys know about outside agencies. As for outside agency approval, that, that this new application has been approved by the county, Morris County Soil Conservation District, the Highlands, and NJDEP, which have all been submitted recently to the township.
Well, let's give the board an overview, as to if they were to drive out to Hilton Court now by driving, what's, what's happening at the site right now? And what's the plan going forward? So Mr. Board has an idea of what the, what the sequence is.
Yeah, so as you know, we've been previously approved under the old application, so we put, um, my, uh, my client has proceeded forward to, uh, demo the building. So right now, the demo, uh, this building is demoed, the site is relatively leveled, and soil erosion, um, soil erosion sediment control measures have been placed. So right now, we are, um, we are starting construction.
So Louis, um, getting into the board's, uh, you know, there's a whole bunch of reports, or planner report, or engineer review report. Is there anything in those memos or reports that the applicant cannot comply with, will not comply with, or is everything, everything, uh?
Everything should be squared away. We haven't received, uh, a latest letter from GPI, but I'm sure we can work it out with GPI. Their comments were relatively minor the last time.
And if Mr. Canjiano or his associate has any requests, you'll, you'll work with them and comply with it?
That is correct.
Uh, again, Chairman, we have a whole bunch of people in the architect, traffic, just because, you know, they're, they're going full bore on this, and we wanted to make sure that if the board had any questions on any of the, any of the specialties, we'd be able to answer on that. Pretty much that's it. The one variance we're asking for is, uh, is a less intense variance that was approved last time around. Uh, we have Matt Flynn from John McEnroe's office, Friday. And just 2024 requests, I don't want to waste the board's time.
Well, I'm going to start by turning to Mr. Canjiano and ask him if.
Yeah, this application, as they testified, is an amended, uh, request amended approval from last year's application. And if anyone has any questions on exactly what they're changing, we went over it, but it, it goes down, it, it whittles down to the, 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 the slight, uh, slight adjustments to the loading docks and change in location of the office entry door. Um, they submit it once in November, uh, we had a couple minor comments, they submitted it again in December, we had a couple minor comments, one was about setback at the Draven Way front yard, um, that wasn't calculated correctly. You just resubmit it, uh, last week or the week before. We issued, we issued a letter Friday, on the 31st, I don't know if you received that. And you, uh, they addressed our main comment, which was the, uh, front yard setback distance, and they recalculated it correctly, and it's 2/10ths greater than what was previously approved, or, or a wider, uh, front yard setback. So it's in compliance, um, with the requirement. We have no more comments. I think, I think our last letter of Friday, you'll like it, that it was generally, you addressed all our comments generally. I don't have the letter right, uh, but it was issued Friday, the 31st, and, uh, you just testified, you'll, uh, address any remaining comments, that sounds, that's, that's going to be fine.
Any questions by members of the board?
Just, just one. Thank you for that. Uh, just remind us about the, uh, emergency exits. Are they chained up? I forgot. I'm looking on, on here, but I, it says bollard with chain? That's all, all the time?
They're bollards with chains, same as approved. That hasn't changed.
That's changed. And it's, it's chained up all, all day long?
Yes. And solely unchained when a fire.
Ms. Smith, you had a?
Um, yes, I just wanted to know the, in the permit that I issued, there were 2 retaining walls, uh, maximum height 4.89 feet. Did that change, or is that exactly the same?
Maximum height still the same.
And still 2 retaining walls?
Correct.
Perfect, thank you.
Other members of the board have any questions on this testimony at this time?
Yeah, quick question. Any, any reason for reducing the height? I'm just curious. Is that based on the usage, or?
Honestly, um, my client's team looked at it, and they felt like from feasibility and maybe cost saving template, that they wanted to reduce the height.
Okay, but not based on anything usage or the tenant, or?
I mean, it, it could have been a tenant requirement, but, um, I, yes, to me, it, it might have been a cost saving or a tenant requirement.
Okay, right, thank you.
All right, anybody else?
I had one question. The, the fencing around the retention basins are, is that new? That's new. And that'll comply with the township height for fencing in a front yard, technically? Yeah, it's, it's a maximum 4. Okay. It's, um, dancing, yes, we would make it comply with the township order. And just to be clear for the record, the front yard setback that Mr. Canjiano was referring to, what, what exactly is the front yard setback, since it's the only variance or new variance, change? Previously, it was 120.92, now it's 120.94. So point 02 increased. Okay, so it actually increased from the last one? Meeting where setback was. Oh, yeah, yes, got it. We made it better. Understood. It took a minute, sorry.
Any other questions by members or professionals? Hearing and seeing none. Any members of the public have any questions? Hearing and seeing none. Since there is a variance, we would love to have a little bit of planning testimony.
That point 04, point 02. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I did.
All right, and please state your names.
All right. And please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your business address for the record.
Matt Flynn, F L Y N N. Business address is one zero one Jubilee Drive, Morris Plains, New Jersey.
Now, Matt, the board has previously qualified you as an expert professional. Is there anything changed since the last time you testified regarding your licensure or any of your qualifications?
No.
So we'd ask that Mr. Flynn, you're recognized as an expert professional.
Anybody have any questions on the qualifications, hearing and seeing none?
What I'm passing out is Mr. Flynn's landing package, which we'd ask marked as A three.
Spoiler alert, we're going to submit a brief, maybe a forced age exhibit, addition of an aerial shot, just a drone photo taken by my own.
Great, thanks. Now, Matt, you ordered all the testimony from Mr. Reyes, especially with the project. You participated in the prior iterations. Can you give the board benefit of your testimony?
Sure. So I will be brief. Like was mentioned by our engineer, this is an amended site plan application. We're not here starting from scratch. We're going to work with the previously approved application. So having said that, all the really foundational questions that come with zoning and planning applications in terms of safety, aesthetics, functionality, circulation, all that has really been addressed at this point and really has not changed, except to the extent that has already been testified to. So really here, we're only seeking that one modified C variance, which is the, the front setback variance, which is, like was mentioned, an improvement over the existing conditions. I won't go through the amendments again, since our engineers did a good job at going through those. But just for the record, I do have this exhibit that was just passed out for the board's point of reference here. I'll just go through it briefly. Page one is a simple aerial photograph showing the property highlighted in yellow here. It's an existing vacant property. The, the, the most recent site improvements have been demolished at this point. It's a pretty large property standing out of approximately ten acres. And we get a sense of look around us here. Obviously, the Hilton, some offices, and our best friend is the IRS down at ten then. Just flipping over to sheet two, again, now we have the ten in the front of the page here. And like I said, we have the vacant site conditions. This is a pretty visible property against the ten in the ground view. So by upgrading this with a permitted use that's already been approved, we think it's going to be to the benefit of not only the applicant, of course, but the town and the streetscape group ten as well. Just going through, sheet three is again just the same view, just now we're ten, you see on the left of the page there. I'll let the board put through page four. Again, there, in the background. And so that's that exhibit. Basically, to tie all that into the statutory criteria. Again, this is a C variance. We're in the S U D ten zone. We're talking about a permitted use. Really, the site plan was, like I said, already approved. And really what we have here is something that I think satisfies the C two balancing test. The benefits of the application as a whole substantially outweigh any detriments. All the project benefits that were put forth at the last hearing carry forth today. Really, these are pretty minor amendments to the plan. So all those benefits in terms of getting a permitted use here. We talked about the footprint of the building. We add adequate light air, open space. If you look on page one, we can see that that off ramp of Route ten provides a buffer across, across Dryden Way there. We saw the highly aesthetic building last time. Again, it's going to be actually decreased in terms of massing by decreasing that building height. And again, bringing in underutilized commercial land, making it functional use, productive use that's in keeping with the intent of the zone. So all of that goes towards the purposes of zoning from the municipal land use law. Again, all of that was testified to at the last year. The flip side to that is the negative criteria in terms of zone compliance. This is a substantially compliant application in terms of lot size, lot coverage, building height, building coverage, most of the setbacks, the parking. And I would say that really the intent behind that one variance we're seeking, the setback, is having adequate light air, open space. But again, the footprint of the building is pretty much exactly where it was at the last application. So I think that's been well vetted at this point. So really in conclusion, I would say this is an appropriate amendment. It's in keeping with the prior approval. And of course, really keeping this, this land back into functional use in keeping with the, the demand and the needs of the, of the current tenant. So with that, I promise to be brief. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Christine, do you have a?
No, it is truly a minor change to the variance, even more minor than had previously been figured out. So you hit on all the points.
Do you have any?
Nope, I have nothing.
Any members of the board have questions on this testimony at this time?
Just an observation. You guys like that drone. We get lots of drone pictures from you.
Yep, we're not the ones in the news, I don't think so.
I was about to ask you that.
You did it during the day.
We're going out there during the day.
Any other members of the board hearing and seeing none? Are there any members of the public who have any questions of this testimony at this time, hearing and seeing none? Are there any other, is there any other testimony that any members of the board feel we should have on this case, or have we heard enough?
Out of curiosity, so the, each of the ramps, there's twenty five of them, are reduced by one foot, I'm sorry, half a foot. That doesn't affect any of the trailers that are going in and out. I should have asked that before.
Louis is still here?
Yeah. Sorry, Louis.
Fine. Yeah, so that was my, one of my points.
Microphone.
Yeah, that was one of my points. We revised it to match the latest architectural floor plan. So the trailer stalls are fine. They're going to stay the same size. You are correct. The, the loading dock striping width was reduced by half a foot. So it used to be thirteen and a half, now it's thirteen. Yeah, it's a minor change.
Thank you.
Any other members of the board? Hearing and seeing none. Are there any members of the public who have any questions on this witness, this testimony? Hearing and seeing none. Do you have anything further?
No, Chairman, just to thank the planning board for all the time. This, again, this is the third time we've been looking at.
Sure.
The same iteration and the new order is eagerly proceeding with it, and we thank the board for all the time and effort, and the board's consultants and freshmen. A lot of effort was put, a lot of thought was put into this project. So we hope that when it's done, town will be really proud of it.
Are there any members of the public who have any questions or comments on this application? Hearing and seeing none. This closes the evidentiary portion of tonight's hearing. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. DeDeeche.
I move a motion to approve application number twenty four, Corin five twenty eight B ten, Hilton Court owner LLC. Two Hilton Court, block two, lot three point ten, minor site plan to modify building height, removal of dry ramp, relocation of parking spaces, and setback improvement.
Subject two, any conditions?
The conditions were to comply with the township and board professional reports and work with the professionals to achieve compliance, to comply with the township ordinance regarding fence height around the basins, and you're permitted to the revised front yard setback of one twenty point nine four.
Second, Neely. Second, Neely. Nora, would you call the role, please?
DeDeeche.
Yes.
G P L.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Palatano.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Vandyel.
Yes.
Is there any other, anything else to come before the board tonight? Hearing and seeing none. I have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Anybody? Thank you all. I had hopes, but I just dare say. We had one on the board of adjustment that walked in and figured it was going to be done in half an hour. We left after. We ended up with a whole bunch of. Tucked in here, quiet, and then all of a sudden they were.